You'll have it recorded? Okay. Yeah, you can. Yep, it's fine.
Okay, call to order. The assessment hearing for 2024 Street and Alley Reconditioning Project. Devin, are you taking some notes? Are you gonna take the call for us, or are you doing that?
I can do it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Counselor Halverson?
Present.
Counselor McLaRaha?
Present.
Counselor Felton? Absent. Counselor Hallawa? Absent. Counselor Vaki? Absent. Mayor Lance?
Here. Okay, we will get right into it. Jim, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We have the presentation up on the board, and I'll just, and I think you've got a hard copy in front of you as well. We are holding the assessment hearing for our 2024 Street and Alley Reconditioning Project. And if you'll flip to actually the third page now, there's a little map there showing the two streets and the seven alleys. There's probably about 12 or 14 blocks of actual alleys, but in seven different locations, as well as the Ironman parking lot that were a part of this project. Then if you'll go to the fourth page, please. We have a summary of the project costs broken down. Construction cost of the streets and alleys, which were the base bid for this project, totaled $150,698. The Ironman parking lot, which we end up reconstructing rather than just doing a mill and overlay of it, was $103,716 for a total construction cost of $254,414. We've estimated the overhead at 20%, which amounts to $50,882.80, making the total estimated project cost $305,296.80. And then from the assessment roll that has been prepared for this, and the residents have been notified, the abutting and benefited properties have been notified. The estimated assessment revenues from this project are $84,764, making the net cost to the city of $220,532.80. And then if you would go to the last page, I've taken those project costs and isolated them, the project cost and then the assessment revenues for each one of those 11 sec- uh, sec- excuse me, two, seven, 10 segments, I think there are. The two streets, the seven alleys, and then the Ironman parking lot. You see the project costs minus the assessment revenues for that particular segment or that particular street or that particular parking lot, showing the net cost to the city, and again, showing at the bottom then the total estimated project cost of $305,296.80, minus the assessment, projected assessment revenues of $84,764, resulting in a net cost to the city of $220,532.80. That concludes our part of the presentation. A couple of things that I would like to mention for those who might be watching on TV. The payment options, and these were spelled out in the notice of the assessment hearing that was sent to each one of the property owners. What's being proposed that will be on your council agenda tonight is the resolution adopting the assessment role. It's being proposed that those assessments can be certified to the county. Spread, payments spread out over 10 years at a proposed rate, interest rate of 3%. If the people come in, we have to certify to the county these assessments about the end of November. They can be modified or adjusted in December, but if possible, we would ask people to come in before the end of December if they wish to pay any part of that assessment. They can pay $0, they can pay $10, $100, they can pay the full assessment or any portion of that assessment. Then whatever that balance is, is what gets certified to the county, spread over the 10 years at the 3% interest rate. And in, so the first payments, these will start showing up on the property taxes due in 2025. And any, during any particular year of that 10-year period, they can come in and pay off the balance. All they'll be doing is paying 3% interest on whatever that outstanding balance is for that particular year. So if they come in in March or June of 2027 and pay off the balance, they will be paying interest through the end of that year, but that terminates the project as a whole. The city does have a deferment policy. If someone is due to age, disability, income can come into City Hall and fill out a form where their assessments can be deferred. It does carry on the books at the county until such time in the future when their property is sold or transferred, at which time it would become due and payable. But it does continue to accumulate or compound the interest at 3% on that outstanding balance while, during that whole period that it is being deferred. There is an appeal process, and I guess I'll turn it back right now to Stephanie. We did receive one objection to the assessment.
Yes, we received one objection from Sally Hill Shushirob. And we'll keep that on file.
And basically, what happens then? The property owners had until tonight to, either tonight at this hearing or in advance of it, to file an appeal, which this person does. At this point, they have 10 days if they wish to continue that appeal. Brian, I'll refer to you to correct me, but if they wish to continue with that assessment appeal, they have 10 days from this, the adoption of the assessment role tonight to file their appeal with the district court.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the, the appeal must be served upon the city within 30 days, and once it's served upon the city, it's required to be filed with the district court within 10 days.
Thank you. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
No questions.
With that, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Shall we close this then, or are you gonna stay open? Evening. You here for the assessment hearing?
No.
No, perfect, alright.
Good, you can do that.
You have to stay open for a certain amount of time?
No, I give it, I give it maybe five more minutes and then, and then close it.
Sounds good.
No, you can just call it. Any meeting, you can just call to order, you don't need a motion to open.
Alright, counsel, I'll give it five more minutes here and then go ahead and close it down and have a quick break before the council meeting. Come on in, chief.
For the first meeting, or something? Thank you, Brett, Brian.
No, sorry, I didn't-
No, no, I appreciate that. I misspoke. Because they do have three days from these options, assessment role, to file it with district courts, and then within 10 days thereafter to file it.
To file it, yep.
That I do want to address, it's going to be on Exhibit B, number five, Subproject E. It states 201 First Avenue Northwest in your packet, and it is 201 First Avenue Southwest. It, that already has been changed and everything's been uploaded into Flex. So I'm just looking for approval for the grant for the 2024 demolition program.
Okay. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve the grant agreement with that correction.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
I do.
Yeah.
Checked all the boxes.
We checked all the boxes. Everything's privately owned, and we don't have any orders for demolition.
All the review discussions?
Yes, correct.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Do you mind me? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In follow-up to our assessment hearing that was held at 5 o'clock tonight, attached on page 42, you have the resolution adopting those assessments for the 2020, excuse me, 2024 Street and Alley Reconditioning Project. I just would note, when you go to page 42, if you go down to paragraph numbered three, if you go across in that first line, it talks about any time prior to November 30th, that should be 2024. The four is just missing, so it's just a, if you'll just add that to it. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend adoption of Resolution 1124-89.
Hey, counsel, unless there's any questions, look for a motion to approve Resolution 1124-89.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and then moving right along to page 43. As part of that same project, our 2024 Street and Alley Reconditioning Project, what you have on the next page is the Certificate of Substantial Completion, which is dated October 12th, when substantial completion of that project was achieved in advance of the contract deadline of October 18th. And we are recommending, it has been signed by the engineer and by the contractor, and I am recommending approval by the city of that certificate of substantial completion. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, if there's no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the Certificate of Substantial Completion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and then turning to pages 45 and 46, as part of that same project, we have our final application, final pay application number two for that 2024 Street and Alley Reconditioning Project. A month ago, we approved pay application number one, which the work was completed at that time. The only thing we were doing is retaining 2% retainage until we received the necessary documents, the letter of consent from the surety companies, the lien waivers, and the IC-134s that are required regarding payment of state taxes. So what I am recommending tonight is the approval of pay application number two, which is that 2% retainage in the amount of $5,088.28. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of that pay.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Hey, counsel, if there's no questions, I'd look for a motion and support for final pay application number two.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and then turning to pages 47 and 48 and 49. This is from, I'm not sure how you're in blight, but it's our apex. It's our contractor for our ice arena and curling club. This is pay application number one. You see the breakdown. If you go to page 49, it lists all the different components, what we're dealing with on this pay application. Our items number one, two, and three that deal with the design, the mobilization, general conditions, and the refrigeration system. And what you see as you go across on each of those first three items, well, in the column C, you see what the contract calls for in terms of total remuneration. And then column E, this period completed amount is the same as column G, completed and stored to date. What they're seeking is 80% payment on the design aspects of this project, amounting to $309,499.20. Seeking 20% completion on the mobilization general condition, which amounts to $28,955.20. And then seeking 1% on the refrigeration system, which amounts to $27,500. So on column G, you see the total work completed and stored to date is $365,954.40. Going across, you see the retainage in the last column, being column K, which totals $2,822, excuse me, $2,822.76. Since, if you just look then to page 48, along that left side, middle of the page, you see the original contract amount is $5,553,645. Going down to item number four, there's been no change order, so the contract has not changed. So the total completed to date that we just went over is $365,954.40. You see the, then the 5% retainage of $2,822.76. So the total earned to date, and there's no previous payments, so is, payment due is $363,131.64. I would recommend approval of pay application number one in that amount. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jim.
And this will probably be the last pay application. I think they started construction now in March, so I would expect it's gonna be April or May before we see any more movement on this project.
Make the motion soon.
Thank you, April.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Sure.
What's the completion date of this project?
October.
I think they've got six months, don't they? October of next year. It starts March 1st through about-
It's like March 17th to October, mid-October.
Okay, thanks. Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion?
Who is the motion by? I'm sorry.
April.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and then if you'll page, turn to page, starting on page 50. This is a new handout that's at your desk, what we had to start with last week, because they were still trying to put together the pay application. So we had a draft pay application that needed to go to the contractor yet, and there were revisions to that, so I think you've got the new one at your desk. Pay application number eight. And if you turn back to the quantity pages, I don't, I don't have the correct page numbers now. But if you'll look at the second page of where we go through actually the bid items, you'll see on the second page of that, most of the big dollar work completed during that period of September 30th through November 2nd is on the concrete and sodding items, as well as paying for the final 25% due on the lift station. Total work completed during that period is $197,275.33 that you, well, excuse me, that's on the base bid, and then there's another $304.12 on the lead service line replacements. Such as, on the last page of that application, the total work completed for both the base bid and the add-alternative are $197,579.45. And then if you'll turn back to what would be page 51, we have the cover page of that partial pay application. Original contract amount is, has remained the same at $2,266,700. The work completed to date then represents 92% of that contract, which is now work completed of $2,087,811.62. There's no stored materials on site. The 5% retainage of that work completed amounts to the $104,390.58. Previous payments you see there of 1700, excuse me, $1,795,720.56. That's the amount due per pay application number eight is $187,700.48. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of pay application number eight in that amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Counsel, if there's no further questions, or if there aren't any questions, I'll look for a motion support for pay application number eight, the amount of $187,700.48.
Make the motion.
Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and then turning, if you will, to page 55. Again, the city is just serving as the fiscal agent on the Tommaso, Tommasoni Memorial Arch. They needed some testing service, material testing services on that. So Witseth, which is, took over Architectural Resources of Hibbing, is the project manager on that project. They went out, solicited quotes from both Braun InterTech of Hibbing and NTS of Virginia. The quotes that they received back for their base bid, Braun, is in the amount of $4,325. NTS was $6,981. The recommendation coming from Jeremy Swat, Schwartz, excuse me, of Witseth is recommending entering into a contractor, retaining the services of Braun InterTech in the estimated amount of $4,325. I would recommend approval of that contract award to Braun in the estimated amount of $4,325. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jim. Counsel, if there's no questions, I'd look for a motion and support for approving this quote with Braun, one of $4,325.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Alright, moving on. Mr. Maruska, good evening.
Good evening. On page 69, you'll see a contract with the Armory. It's a lease agreement for the Chisholm Summer Rec program to utilize the Armory building for the 2025 program season in the amount of a total cost of $150, so a pretty good deal to rent their space for seven weeks. And I've met with, oh, what's her name? I do this, sorry, Kim, Kim Herrick, and she's really excited and even willing to do some programming with the kids. So I think it's a great fit while the curling club is under construction. Looking for your, your approval to enter into this agreement.
That's very, very kind of them, and thank you, Bridget, for taking care of that. So I would look for a motion to approve the Armory lease agreement, Chisholm Summer Rec program.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And on page 72, there is a contract with American Ramp Company. American Ramp Company is one of very few pump track builders in the United States, and they are connected with Velo Solutions. So Velo Solutions ultimately is like the top-of-the-line pump track, where when there are pump track races that happen, UCI sanctioned races, they can only happen on Velo Solutions pump tracks. So the bonus of contracting with a Velo Solutions builder is that we can post defense based off of just the pump track alone. This contract is for design and it's for construction, and it is not to exceed $640,000. The exact size of the pump track will be dependent on the design that the Redhead Committee works through as we are contracted with them. But I would recommend, and the Redhead Committee would recommend, entering into this contract with American Ramp Company.
Excellent. Hey, counsel, unless there's any questions, I would look for a motion support to enter into contract with the American Ramp Company in a contract not to exceed $640,000. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bridget. Devin? Excuse me.
Mr. Seigler. I have more than I usually have. First is Resolution Number 1124-90, adopting utility rate services for 2025. We met with the Public Utility Commission and through Larry and my work. We've approved a budget and approved proposed rate increases, and it's been approved at the commission level, so now it's being brought here to be approved at council level. So with Resolution 1124-90, requesting council action to adopt the 2025 utility rates. Total increase from standard utility bill will be $3.82 per month, which includes water, sewer, and garbage. The rate is relatively consistent with the recommended Baker-Tilly study that was done maybe five years ago. Oh, from 2021 through 2026, I have it noted here. Site increases and changes were made to the rates to reflect changes, but it has trended similar to that rate study. And once again, PUC approved these rates and budgets at their 1016 meeting. So with that, I request council action to adopt the 2025 rates.
Hey, counsel, if there's any questions, I'd look for a motion support for Resolution Number 1124-90.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Here.
Do you know how much of a percentage this increase is by chance?
Yes. Well, I might ask 10.53, yeah. Water, sewer, and everything. Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I believe, is the fire protection agreement for the unorganized township 59-21. This contract is from the county, and it's to cover the unorganized township, which has been past practice. I think the county reached out and they offered 7%, and I think that's pretty reasonable from 2024. It's just a one, one-year contract, so it'll increase from $18,285 to $19,565. And pretty much straightforward and same contract that we had in previous years, just at a high rate. So with that, I would request the council to take action to accept the fire protection.
Hey, counsel, unless there's any questions, I'd look for a motion and support to approve the the new agreement with St. Louis County for, to cover unorganized township 59-21. Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, I guess on this next candidacy in the November election, I want to take an opportunity to thank Denise and Christie and all the election officials, being this was my first election and obviously one of the biggest- Uh, being this was my first election and obviously one of the biggest ones in our nation's history. I, I really appreciate all their hard work and the additional hours that they put in, especially to help me through, huh, something that's so brand-new to me. So, thank you. Um, so res- resolution number eleven twenty-four dash ninety-one is canvassing the November election and declaring the results.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution one-one-two-four dash nine-one.
Make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Next on the agenda are the, uh, budget amendments. Um, I'm not entirely sure how Eileen did it, but I, I tried to follow her, um, steps as closely as possible. So on page one-twenty-seven, this is a summary of all the budget adjustments. I, uh, I basically have all the budget adjustments in, in code in our accounting software. It's basically, once it's approved, I'll be able to click a button and the budget adjustments will, uh, will be shown. So, just keep that in mind when we're looking at the financial information from, um, the first three quarters, because these budget adjustments are not reflected in that information. But it will be, uh, really easy to pull that detail once, once these adjustments are approved. Then, uh, page one-thirty-one through, through one-thirty-nine are, is the detail of those budget adjustments. Most of them are pretty self-explanatory. Uh, I, I wrote the reasons on there, and then I also, um, noted the budget adjustment number that relates back to this first summer year. I don't know if, um, if you, anybody has any questions, if you had time to look over these. I, I don't think there's anything real major that, that needs to be addressed.
Okay, well, we all got the packet on Friday. Did anybody, uh, see anything, uh, that jumped out at them?
So, the only, I don't have anything specific. My only question, just to make sure, is that everything, you're just moving money. There's not like, uh, at this point, we don't, we're not cutting into our other funding to cover things.
Correct. Yeah, a lot of these budget adjustments are for grants that weren't anticipated at the beginning of the year. So, basically, we just don't want to show a huge over expenditure in a certain department when we got a grant for it that'll cover those expenses.
Just to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, or, or else, uh, some are within the department, and so it's just basically moving inner mine items.
Got it. Thank you.
Alright, uh, so if there's no other questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the, uh, bud- budget amendments.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Then my final item is the financial review for the period, uh, for the first three quarters of twenty-twenty-four. As I mentioned before, just keep in mind that those budget adjustments are not reflected in this, but will be going forward once, once those are posted. Um, I tried reviewing what, what Eileen did and, and using the old software. Um, I tried to pull reports out of in-code instead of, um, using Excel file where I could make errors or there could be formula errors. So that's why, um, this packet is kind of big, and I am more than open to, um, constructive criticism, or if there's anything else that you guys would like to see us come through it. Or if you'd like more summarized version. Um, so basically what I did, I, I outlined it in that memo. Basically, except the revenue and expenditures by department in total, it's off anywhere out of line. Basically, we're three-quarters of the way through the year, and so roughly seventy-five percent of the, um, budget should roughly be spent. So any that were out of whack, I, I made, uh, comments in red on. One of the, one of the things that will for sure be out of line is the revenues, just because the payments are, um, they're not paid or charged, they're not paid equally throughout the year. Basically, we got our, our tax revenue three times a year. Um, and same with, uh, like LGA, that gets paid in two different payments, so it's not going to be necessarily even throughout the year. Um, so I, I basically had noted in red all the differences there.
You know, Eileen had pie charts and all these, and all the nice color that was on the screen. You know, I, I do appreciate you, you know, at least reaching out to everybody at the time, you know, in the packet, letting us know, you know, if anybody had questions to come and talk to you. Um, you know, it's definitely something that we can work for. This is going to be, uh, you know, a learning experience for you, you know, when you come through here. But, uh, yeah, there's a lot of information that's going through here, but, you know, and Devin is definitely, uh, available throughout the day if anybody has questions, and I'm sure he'd be more than happy to, uh, arrange any meetings.
Absolutely.
We'll see you Monday night anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, and it, and that's something that I can get, uh, different reports in here for you with the budget adjustments in there as well.
Cheap's getting the pizza.
Only if you bring the animation. She had animation, everything's cheap. Man, I can't.
Alright, uh, since this is an action item, I would look for a motion and support to, uh, you know, approve the financial review report, but I believe this also could have just been not informational for the hills. But since we have it on here.
Make that motion.
Thank you, April. Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, Travis. Ms. Grabba.
What do you mean? The first item I have on the agenda is the consultant agreement with Costing Group. This is the agreement we have with Jeff Anderson that's been doing work for us at the Capitol. Um, I would recommend we approve this. It's no change from our, from our last contract with them. No financial change. We do have it budgeted for the twenty-five.
Alright. I believe they're a big help for us, so, uh, unless there's any questions, I would look for a motion and support to approve the agreement, um, with Costing Group, Inc., Council case consultant agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda is, um, it's kind of twofold. We have an updated fitness center policy. And the request to move our current fitness equipment down to the old ambulance garage back behind the city, um, city hall. There is some changes. I have consulted with the League of Minnesota Cities, also with Ravina, our HR consultant, that drafts the majority of our policies and helps with those. So she assists with this policy. It is a little bit more in-depth than what we've had before. Um, and it does limit the use, um, the folks that are allowed to utilize that facility. I did also consult with Attorney Lindsay on this policy, and, uh, I will have him speak also, but we feel it's with the liability of, um, limiting the s- the, the loan of people that are utilizing it and having ours, our current staff being able to utilize that facility.
Ms. Famine? Please. I, I did have a conversation with Administrator Scrabba, uh, and this is, uh, starting from kind of a base point as a, as a, the legal counsel for the city and, and looking at liability, Jim's always terrifying. Um, so I think it, it is, it's a, it's appropriate to limit the use to current employees. It, it's kind of a risk reward, uh, or, or kind of a balance of risk. I did also reach out to the League of Minnesota's, uh, City's Trust, the insurance trust, and spoke with them. Uh, I think they, while they didn't give a hard and fast opinion, I think they've leaned toward this as well, that kind of the idea being the more people we have going in and out of there, and, and the more, the less control we have over the people that are going in and out of there. The more risk and liability that we could expose ourselves to. If there's specific questions that we have to train you.
Mr. Mayor, one question. So there's no chance of adding, like retirees, Officer Al Mattson, Terracotta, uh, firefighter, former EMT, uses the gym up there right now? I just think that, is, there's no way of, no way of adding any retirees to this?
I think if we were to add anybody, retirees would make the most sense, because the majority of them are currently still on the city's insurance, and obviously, there's multiple reasons for that. Um, where I get a little more, have more of an opinion on these women than I have more of the citizens, uh, that aren't on our insurance plan, that aren't currently employed or hasn't, haven't been employed in this city.
Mr. Mayor, Famine? I, I think the thing, from my perspective, I think the thing that we would add is, one of the keys, from my perspective, of having the limitations of employees. We as a city have some control over employees. I mean, theoretically, if you go up to the, obviously, all of our employees treat all the equipment respectfully, but if there's situations where people are using the, the facilities inappropriately, or there's things happening up there that shouldn't be. I mean, theoretically, there, there's some employment ramifications or potentially some discipline, limb ramifications that can occur. As people get more and more remote from the ci- uh, from the control of the city, those things become less and less likely. You can say, hey, yeah, you can't come up here, but some of the issues that have come up historically is there's been a number of keys to the facility that have been out, that has kind of been unknown over there. And so we lose some control there. Um, I, I do tend to agree that, you know, if a retiree is on the insurance plan, that would seem to be a natural extension. And I think we still would have some of the same, uh, control available, uh, in those circumstances, so that may be an appropriate extension.
Yeah, I like that. I like, I like, I like your right to, retiree would be like twenty years, you know, full pension or thirty years as it works or whatever, you know? Not just a guy that's, just got his, um, just got vested, for example, you know, f- five years, ten years, whatever, but a full retiree I'm, I'm talking, so.
Maybe qualified, right, because they're
Yeah, say that.
The next thing, that's what he's describing is what qualifies, what constitutes retiree. Right, you know, so somebody could, you know, somebody can retire off the fire department after ten years, you're asking. Someone can, um, you know, have ambulance, we don't have that pension like we have there.
So that would be how many years here?
Police officer, about twenty years?
But, I, no, I, I, to be honest with you, like, are, some people are in fifteen years' equipment, say they're retired, police officer, but they're not, in order to be, to qualify for any of the insurance. Speaking from a union standpoint and our union contracts, in order to qualify for insurance, you have to be taking your full retirement. So if I went to retire from the city of Chisholm, but I defer my para for five years, go work for the mines, I'm not eligible for retirement benefits. So I would think that, per what our city contracts say, you're taking your retirement. So whether you're vested or not, you're not a fifteen-year employee that's quitting, not pulling your para, um, yours, you know, going to work in the mines or something, that's not considered retiree. You'd have to be pulling your retirement benefits. Is, is how it's defined in our contracts right now. So let's declare, I mean, you can do whatever you want, you're the council, but I'm just saying what our, our contracts clearly say. So that's considered a full, or a retired.
If you were asking me, I, I would say the same to that, city employees. I mean, after however many years you have, and when you're here, I mean, someone retires, they're on our insurance, if someone wants to be healthy, they're going to choose to be healthy. Uh, I don't think having that care of Dango Department is going to draw them out. Um, I think we're starting to start getting into, you know, what constitutes retiree on the fire department side, and where you can go there. Um, you know, I think this is a great benefit for city employees. Like after that, you know, our city employees are taken care of very well compared to other communities around, or just as well as other communities, but after that, you know.
So we're going to just leave it as current employees?
Well, we could. Straighten that way.
Right.
I just don't want there to be muddy water. That's my only. If you're going to do retirees, like, we need to, we need to draw, this is it. Like, it has to be, like, I don't want there to be gray area. It needs to be a black and white area if we're going to include anyone other than employees. I'm fine leaving it as an employees. I mean, we do have a gym option here in town as well, um, for, for those. Um, but I'm not opposed to adding retirees, as long as it's very clearly defined who that is. That would be my only. So this can always be amended. It can be amended by future councils, anywhere else, but, um, for now, my, uh, my request would be to, a motion and support to approve the fitness center use. I'll say a thing.
Does we have, so, uh, can we just?
Yeah.
Could we specify retirees that are on our insurance?
Yes.
Because that would be not, that would be a cut in our fees, and I think it's true to the benefit of the city and the retiree. And he said we're still, uh, insurance-wise, they're covered if something happened. Just.
And then you also have firefighters that don't get the option to be on our insurance, that's for twenty years, or you might have, you know, twenty-year veteran EMT eventually, that, you know, doesn't get the same benefits, but, uh, you know, incurred the same stress and PTSD and hazards of the job. So we, it's kind of a.
That's fair, you know, I didn't know that for you, but.
Right. Well, I think to get something started, I'm not opposed to amending this in the future, but I'll make the motion to leave it as it reads.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion?
She was turning, so I was waiting.
I appreciate it. So this is basically, we just got to move this equipment from up there to over here, and during that time, we could possibly get this amended. If possible.
We can always, yeah, we have future discussions about it, but at least this is something to get started. At least that's what I'm looking at.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. Alright, does anyone have anything for miscellaneous?
Oh, goodness. You're a word and one too.
Uh, I'm, my next item on the agenda, um, I also want to thank, uh, Chief Masusi. It's been great working with him. He pretty much became, was the chief right when I first started here, so he has been the one that I've been working with since I started working here, so. Um, best of luck to him in his retirement. So in my recommendation for the interim, um, with the fire department, would be to appoint Jason Worley as the interim fire chief. I have been working with the fire department, and we will come up with a permanent solution. Um, when, when we have that, we'll bring it to council, but in the interim, I would recommend on your point, Jason.
And Counsel, so I'd look for a motion to appoint Assistant Chief Jason Worley as interim fire chief.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, does anyone have anything else to say? And if not, oh, that's for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Finishing our break.